To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Bowman.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman. Trustee Marasek.
Here.
Trustee Betzinger.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum this evening. First item, public participation. This is the two-minute opportunity for any member of the public, anybody in the room that's not on the agenda that wishes to address the board. All right, is there any, did anybody submit any written comments?
They did not.
For the record, is there anybody on Zoom that would like to submit public comment? Okay, here we're done, we'll move on. I'll read the consent and entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the February 13th Village Board Meeting, executive session minutes for February 13th, accounts payable through February 27th, the refuse report for January of '23, the reappointment of Ben Brzaska to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the reappointment of Joseph Yen to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Yes.
That carries five to zero. Thank you. And Ben, congratulations. Thank you for your service and helping us out. All right, items for separate action. Item A is Resolution 2023-004 authorizing the execution of an agreement for dispersment and use of Kendall County's American Rescue Plan Act funds. Administrator Zoffel.
Thank you. This is an item you should all be familiar with. If you recall, the county wanted to use some of their ARPA funds in Boulder Hill, so we went and spoke with them. Pete went and presented to them. We asked for money for water main replacement to help with our, getting our water loss down as part of our Lake Michigan transition project. So they agreed to give us $2 million for that, and this agreement just takes care of that, sets forth the agreement between us, what they're responsible for, what we're responsible for. They will disperse us our funds.
Question for you. I read this over the weekend, so it's a little fuzzy right now. The $2 million, do we anticipate that will cover all that we need to do on Boulder Hill?
No.
Not, not everything, I'm talking, I'm not talking everything, the main replacements, or is this just going to be?
Well, I mean, we will scale a project for $2 million in Boulder Hill.
Okay.
But, I mean, I believe the anticipated, we talked, was roughly?
Seventy-five.
Oh, I was being optimistic, whatever, never mind. Just forget I even.
So no.
I did have the opportunity to speak with the new chair of the Kendall County Board over the weekend and expressed our support and gratitude for being able to utilize ARPA funds in this way that directly help Kendall County residents and Montgomery water users.
Motion to approve. Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek. Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
That carries five to zero. Thank you. Item B is Ordinance 1998 proposing the establishment of SSA number 44 for Ockott Road Truck Terminal as 1975 Ockott Road. This is waiver first, passage on the second. Director App.
Yes, as you recall, we approved an expansion of the truck terminal out at 1975 Ockott Road. Some of their project did involve creating some compensatory storage on there, therefore we do need to establish an SSA. They are in the process of putting together their plat of easement for stormwater, which will also become, coming before you at a future date. But this one is our, proposing the establishment ordinance, which sets our public hearing date, which would be May 8th, and then after that, we can move forward with actually adopting the SSA. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Is this a active or a backup SSA?
It'll be a backup.
Cool. Any questions?
No. Move to approve.
Okay. Go ahead.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
That carries five to zero. Thanks. Item C is Resolution 2023-005 authorizing stationary food vendor licenses. Director App.
Yes, we received an application for a new stationary food vendor license for Ortega Food on Wheels. They are looking to locate over at the Menards parking lot. We previously had approved Taco Grill over there, and now Ortega is going to be moving into there, so this will be updating the list and granting the license for Ortega Foods.
I meant to ask you this, but the taco guy moved over to the J.C. Penney parking lot?
Yes. So we're working with him on getting?
Got it.
A new license set up for new location, so.
Okay. Because we're not going to have two, right?
We will see if he actually applies to be there, or if he will need to be removing his food truck.
Got it. Is it an annual license?
Um, yes, they renew it annually, but it doesn't come before you annually.
So Taco Grill, they had one previously for last year and has just not renewed?
Correct.
So is this something that is solicited, or is this maybe something that's known among food truck vendors that there are certain spots that are available? Like, is this, is this specific to this location, or could this user choose any parking lot within the village and apply for a license?
This license will be specifically for this, this location, so if he wanted to change locations, we would need to amend the resolution, he would need to amend his application for a new location. So I've been working with, with him for a couple of months now on finding a location.
Okay. And so to clarify President Brawley's kind of comment, we wouldn't, or would we allow someone to also put up shop in the same, I would consider almost the same parking lot, right, Menards versus J.C. Penney? Would another truck vendor be allowed to put up in that parking lot, say anywhere from Menards all the way to Sam's Club?
I think per our ordinance, it is a separate lot, technically. It's a separate subdivided lot, so technically it would be allowed, should the board choose to approve the license.
But this is sort of written like, like our liquor licenses, that there are only three available, right?
Correct. So a new one would need to come in and apply, and you would have to create a license.
We would not be in any obligation to grant that.
Correct.
Only, only three of these licenses within the village?
Yeah, we started at zero, and then somebody came to us and said they want to go here. They want to go here, and we've, we've allowed that. I just, just so we've at least spoken about it, I feel like I saw that there, and there's another one here. I don't think it's, I wouldn't be supportive of adding more in this region. I feel like that one is, one in the area is sufficient.
And the idea of, I'm just going to pick up and move to another parking lot.
Well, right, and it doesn't seem fair to the?
Not very.
The other structured restaurants.
Right.
In the area either.
Yeah. Okay. All right, if there's no other comments, is there a motion on item C?
So moved.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger, could you clarify what your vote was?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, didn't hear.
It was yes.
Okay.
Yes, it was yes. Thank you for clarifying.
Clarification, yeah.
All right, thank you. Moving on, item D, word of a contract to Mark Kresmeri Construction LLC in the amount of $316,400 for the Farm and, sorry, Fairfield and Farm and Fleet lift station modifications. Director Wolf, did you have an intro?
I did not. I believe Engineer Waller's just handling this. We received bids on February 13th for the US-30 and Fairfield lift station modifications. Two bidders submitted. We are recommending for approval the low bidder, which is Mark Kresmeri Construction LLC. The amount is $316,400. Engineer's estimate was $400,000, so underestimate. This is a contractor that we have worked with before, so we don't have any trepidations about the award. Fairly complex project, but Kresmeri was asking a lot of questions from the project manager, so we believe that the bid is complete, and we don't anticipate any issues there. Now, I'll just say that, you know, sometimes doing the assessment on a live sanitary sewer lift station can be a little daunting, so I'm not going to tell you that there may not be something that's discovered as we clear out the pumpage and the equipment and things, but we believe it's, you know, most things are covered, so we'll move forward, and we believe this is a good bid, and we should award it.
Engineer Waller, so I have a question for you. Several years ago, we started raising our water rates to work on the lift stations. So were these previously worked on, or I guess my question is, how long ago were they worked on?
To the best of my knowledge, we haven't done any substantive repairs on any of these stations, so this will be the first time. I'd have to go back to the records to find out when we constructed all of these, but, I mean, the Fairfield station went in at the, at the start of the Fairfield and Cambridge subdivision, so some time ago, and obviously the Farmer Fleet went in when Farmer Fleet built. So they've been in service a long time, they're kind of due for rehab for sure, so, you know, I think we got good service life out of them. So I can get the exact dates, though.
I don't need the exact date, I just, this, that's what I thought of was, I remember we had started to raise our rates to put money in, into the actual infrastructure of our water system, and I specifically remember the lift stations were going to be worked on, so I wasn't sure if we had started to do that recently or not.
So the, the village does differentiate a little bit between their wastewater infrastructure and the water, potable water infrastructure, but they are funded through, right now funded through the same account. I think as we move towards Lake Michigan supply, that's probably something that we're going to want to draw a little brighter distinction on, and make sure that we're kind of funding, you know, what we need to fund the sanitary sewer infrastructure versus the water infrastructure. In the budget this year, I know that we're putting in funds for the reduction of inflow and infiltration in one of the basins near Route 25, which serves a lift station that we'll, we'll manage. I think we'll see more of that in coming years, and it might be that there needs to be a earmark for that specific on the bill. So something to talk about in the future, but yeah, it's, it's all, you know, things that were anticipated.
Okay, thank you.
Will the new SCADA equipment be installed also at this time from Metropolitan?
We're working with Metropolitan right now, they're, they procured, started procuring the equipment necessary for that. We don't have a specific ETA yet for the PLCs, but once we get it, yes, we're going to try and move forward. That's still forecasted to be completed before the end of the fiscal year, so it should align pretty closely with this construction project.
Perfect. Invite the SCADA guy back again, just so, you know, him and Dan can have a sweet chat on SCADA.
Actually, we continue that on a call on a later date, so.
Putting that expertise to use. All right, any other questions on item D?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
That carries five to zero. Thank you all. The last item for separate action is word of a contract to Thomas Interiors in the amount of $130,996.05, the purchase of office furniture for the new Public Works facility. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Brawley. So as you mentioned, the project in front of the board tonight is for the award to Thomas Interiors for the new Public Works facility office. So there were three bidders, bids were opened on February 16th, four bidders a total that submitted bids. After review of the submittals by Williams Architects, they are recommending the award of contract to the low bidder, Thomas Interiors, for $130,996.05. This is roughly just under $6,000 over the original budget that was proposed for this. Keep in mind that this item was budgeted back in 2001, so well before a lot of the inflation that took place, so given the size of this contract, it's a slight increase, but definitely still wanted to mention that to the board. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Motion to approve.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Five to zero. Thanks. All right, we don't have anything on the agenda for discussion. Is there anything new or unfinished to come before the board?
Polar plunge is this Sunday. If you'd like to go through, I'm sure there's links somewhere, or contact Commander Palco. Kindly sponsor and donate, it's a great cause for Special Olympics. Donate to Lucy Neat. She's, she's the team captain as far as I'm concerned, but yeah, so she's, she's doing a great job. It's great to see her being involved, so it's going to be a fun, a lot of fun. A little cold, but.
Perfect.
I've got one thing also.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would like us to consider revisiting our policy of mailbox repair and replacement. A little history years ago, when we would damage a mailbox as a result of winter operations, Public Works would go out and look at the mailbox, determine if it was through our fault. If it was, we would just repair it and, and move on. Due to staffing problems, we changed the policy to issue ourselves a check to the residents and letting them make the repairs themselves, and then submitting the receipts for reimbursement, and right now it's up to a maximum of $75, which obviously in most cases probably doesn't cover that repair. But of more concern is the amount of staff time that we utilize to issue that $75 check. If, if somebody's mailbox is hit, they've put in a call or a service request order, then that has got to be printed out, and then someone goes out and looks at the mailbox. That's, that's going to happen irrespective. They, they go out, they take a temporary mailbox, they set the temporary mailbox, then a supervisor goes out and looks, is it ours, or if it's not ours? And then we have to generate a, a letter to the person and say, well, yeah, we've terminated yours, this is the steps you have to take, then, then they have to go through the task of, you know, going out, purchasing everything and repairing it, and submitting the receipts, and then someone here has got to go through those receipts and take off the candy bars and stuff, and recalculate it for what's actually the cost of the mailbox repair, and then that's got to be put into the system, and it's got to go over to accounts payable, and they've got to cut a check, and someone's got to mail the check. I mean, we're probably spending $200 to send out a $75 check. I would like us to consider going back to just going out, looking at the mailbox, if we bear responsibility just making the repair. A lot of times, in my past experience, it was the bottom plate, there's, you know, there's the post, and there's like a wood plate, and then there's a mailbox. The, the wood plate attaches to the post, and the mailbox attaches to the wood plate. I mean, that piece of wood's 10 bucks. Takes you that plate and a couple of screws, and maybe, you know, five or 10 minutes to replace it. We're not going through the hassle of arguing with residents, making them go through and repair a mailbox, and spending a lot of their time to correct something that we've damaged. You know, I, I feel if, if we damage somebody's property, we have a responsibility to either repair it or, or pay to have it repaired. And I would just like to have the board reconsider our policy on that and, and go back to repairing them in-house. And of course, I'm not saying fix them all, because we've had cases before where you go out and the mailbox is laying down, the post is rotten. That's a maintenance item. We've had instances before where, in the middle of summer, we have a strong storm come through and it knocks somebody's mailbox over. Well, you know, it's because the post is rotten. You know, that thing was going to fall over irrespective. I'm not looking at, we fixed everybody's mailbox that's in this repair, because it's, you know, a maintenance item that they're responsible for. But if we damaged their mailbox during winter operations, I think we should make that right by the residents and either repair it or, or pay to have somebody repair it. I think we have enough staff in-house now at Public Works that we could do it in-house and not have to pay. Last I heard, to have someone come out and reinstall a mailbox, you know, handyman or contractors, it's 200 bucks for materials and labor. So, you know, I think of the people who, you know, don't have the ability to repair mailboxes on their own seniors, or, you know, single moms, or, you know, just some people that just, you know, aren't handy. They're having to re, you know, pay someone $200 to repair their mailbox, and we're giving them a $75 check. I, I just don't think that's equitable. I, I think we should be repairing them.
Just a question that popped in my head. Do we distinguish between when we physically, physically hit a mailbox with something? I know it happens during, like even construction of a roads program or plowing, if we hit a mailbox, that seems to be way different from than if we throw snow into a mailbox.
So, so yes, President Brawley, the, our, the village's policy does distinguish the difference between physical strike of the mailbox or the post versus snow from the actual snowplow blade that may damage the mailbox. So there is a distinction in, in our policy for that.
And, and if we hit it, we, what do we do?
If we hit it, currently the policy states that they're, they're still required to submit for the $75, they're eligible for the $75 reimbursement. So it's still on the homeowner to gain the supplies?
Yep.
And perform the installation.
Got it. I'm just thinking that in any case, and this happened to me, my mailbox was not, it wasn't a snow, but it got knocked off, and it was a pain to fix. It was also my mailbox, and I chose that time to upgrade my mailbox so that it wouldn't happen again. I've seen people in other communities that protect their mailbox from snow on rural routes, but we don't have that. I really don't want to see us, and really, I'm just one of the six of us here, get into the business again, allegedly, I didn't know that we did this back in the, back in the day, to take on any sort of obligations on somebody's mailbox. Like, my neighbor two doors down has a really nice masonry mailbox. I wouldn't want to be, I wouldn't want in any way for us to be involved with fixing his. If he wants to replace it like that, that's great, he can get his $75 and submit it to us. If that amount needs to change, I know we've done that in the past, or at least we've talked about it ad nauseam, but, and if there's, if there's low, low income or some other extenuating circumstance, we do have other avenues for that, whether it be a nonprofit that could help fund that, let's say. We're looking for things to do, but absent those types of things, I don't think a policy shift is really something that I envision.
I agree on the masonry mailbox, but I think that's against our ordinance anyway. You're not allowed to have a masonry mailbox within the right of way.
Tell him that.
Yeah. And I just don't, I just don't think it's right that if we damage somebody's mailbox, that we make them go to all these different agencies to try to find help. And if, if we hit it with snow, and plowing snow on a municipal street is not a fun job, and it is a very difficult job because you're looking, you know, you got to look out for cars, you got to look out for people, you got to look out, you know, for people trying to pass you.
Yeah.
Half the time you can't see well. It's just, it's just one of the worst jobs that you can do, and sometimes things happen. You know, if you're on a, if you're on a Montgomery Road, or, you know, a Gordon or Concorde, yeah, I mean, you're going to just fly and throw the snow in the, in the slop off. But if you're on a side street where there's mailboxes, you know, the policy is 15 miles an hour for, for plowing on a residential street, and if you're going much faster than that, yeah, you're really going to throw some, some slop. I mean, if, if the slop is making it to the sidewalk, obviously you're going too fast, and if you're, and if it's, if the slop is hitting the mailbox, and again, if it breaks the post when it hits the mailbox, and the post is rotten, that's, that's not our responsibility, it's a rotten post. I, I just don't think it's right to make people navigate, you know, a bunch of different agencies to figure out a way to repair a mailbox that we've damaged.
By agencies, you mean?
Well, what you said, if it's low income or, or senior or something. I mean, I kind of equate it, so what if somebody has a car parked on the street, and we go down, and a slush hits and breaks off their side mirror? Are we telling them, well, $75, that's all we got to pay for your side mirror? Yeah, but it's got the, you know, it's electric, and it's got the, yeah, it's not our fault you bought a fancy car, $75, that's all we're going to, and you have to go out and get the part and put it on yourself or find somebody.
So what is our policy if thrown snow hits a parked car?
You can't have cars on the street when there's enough snow.
Two inches. Two inches.
How many times has this situation presented itself?
What, the mailboxes?
And cars on the streets, since that was, what we're spending time talking about.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm not so sure about cars on the street.
How about mailboxes? This winter?
This winter, we've had 12 total complaints, four of which are eligible for the $75 reimbursement.
And do we have, you, do you have an estimation, previous winter seasons, what that number ends up being?
I, I don't off the top of my head. I mean, obviously it's going to fluctuate depending on snowfalls and the types of snowfalls, as Trustee Guyer identified.
But like, maximum couple dozen?
Um, yeah, I would say 20, 30, in that range, maybe.
And I know at one point, like Foxmore was, was hot, because those were generally aging at the same time, and we did a pre-event, you know?
A lot of it's plastic mailboxes, too. If you hit them with the slop, you know, if it's cold enough, they shatter. But again, how much staff time are we spending to cut a $75 check?
Well, I'm, I'm hearing the, two sides of that argument. On one hand, it's we're spending a lot of staff time with the process of how we reimburse for mailbox replacement. On the other hand, you're advocating for staff time going out and actually purchasing and replacing mailboxes.
It's a lot less staff time.
So which, which one is more or less?
It's a lot less staff time. So if you, if you have to go out and look at the mailbox, and typically what we've done in the past, I'm assuming we still do it, is we go out with a temporary mailbox, and we provide the resident with a temporary mailbox. You have to go out and set that temporary mailbox. So if you go out to set that temporary mailbox, and you see that the box is fine, it's laying there, the post is fine, just the board is broken because it was hit with some slop, and you take, and you've got the board, because we used to have the boards in stock, and you take, you know, four, six screws, 10 minutes, and you put it back, and, and you go. You don't set the temporary mailbox, because if you do set the temporary mailbox at some time, point in time, even if you tell the resident, that's not our responsibility, you have to fix it yourself, then they have to call us and say, we've repaired it, and we go back out and we pick up the temporary mailbox. There's so many trips made back and forth, and then, you know, like I said, it's, you know, there's a process through Public Works, and it's got to come to the hall, Pable's got to cut the checks, someone's got to mail the check, you know? I wouldn't be surprised if we spent $200 in staff time cutting that check, that $75 check. So we're $275 into it. If we just sent a guy out there to replace a $10 board, and it's 30 minutes of his time from the time he leaves Public Works to the time he does it, then what are we talking? About 50 bucks in material and staff time? It's, not only that, it's, you know, we're repairing something that we've damaged, that in the eyes of a resident, that we should be repairing. Why, you know, if, if I'm going to play devil's advocate, why should I have to go out and fix my mailbox that you damaged, and then have to submit receipts to you, and the way to get reimbursed? Just fix my mailbox. You, you guys damaged it, and this is really the only thing that we do in the village, or when we damage somebody's property, that we don't repair it in-house. You know, B-Box digs anything, anything that we do, and we damage somebody's property through the course of operations, we, we either make the repair, or we pay to have the repair made. And like Director Wolf said, there's not a lot of them. You know, if we, we had 12, four were, were found to be our fault, you know, and slot goodwill, too, towards the residents, that we're taking, we're repairing something that we've damaged, it's our responsibility to repair, so.
And I wish I would have thought to ask our attorney before today, but it's, I don't even know if I want to go down that route, but.
Right? I know, I know what you're saying.
Is it theirs, is it not theirs? Did they abandon their property in public right of way, so it's not even really there? But either way, the, my opinion on this is, is kind of always been this way, that the $75 amount, that's what we're going to do. I encourage our residents to upgrade from that, if it, if they need to fix it. I don't want us to be going back out there again because somebody didn't appreciate exactly how we installed it. Are we then responsible going forward for the, you know, any sort of obligation on there? And like we talked about with driveway, or the paving last time, I'm not hearing an uproar from, you know, the constituents that they're looking for us to change the policy on this, and I think the status quo wins out.
I don't think it's an uproar because it's the one person it affects that week. So they're gonna be frustrated, they're all over social media hostile about it. I just spent the last few minutes looking online at some replacement items, and there are some variants in prices for the wood posts and the box themselves, anywhere from 60 to $100 on the basic stuff, which most of us have installed by the builder. So if we, and by the time you think of time, you have to dig up the old post and the concrete that's in there. I'll give them Trustee Mersek's number to call and let him replace it.
Or they're just, they're really just putting it next to. I mean, that's what I did, I just left everything in the ground and put a new one.
But, you know, it is something that it's not, we have the choice. I mean, you know, the neighborhood I grew up in, our mailbox was attached to our house. You know, it wasn't, it wasn't an issue. So now we have new developments where, whether it's village requirements, builders' requirements, or the post office requirements, they say, now you have to put this box out at the curb. Me, I'd rather have the safety and security of it being up on my front door the way it used to be, but now we're required to have these out by the street. I think it's tough having it as a village requirement because there is such a broad range of products that are out there. However, if we decide that $75 isn't quite going to cut it, maybe we decide it's gonna be $100 and that's it. But it's also, a little bit, there's a lot going on in the drivers in the snowfall that's going on as well. But do these guys see that it's happened as they're, as this is going on? Can they, do they know that they've knocked a mailbox down? As they've gone through, and I know that within 20 minutes' time, a truck has gone around the block and come in front of my house, and I'm at a T-intersection, I've heard that truck go by two or three times in a half hour. Do they realize that, oh shit, crap, I knocked down that mailbox? And proactively, the village connects with that resident. Because I know that it's not just one and done, and they're gone, they come back. So maybe it's just even that much. This happened, here's what we do, here are the next steps, versus now it's the next day the resident goes out and, you know, they're upset at everybody, they're upset at the village. At least we've proactively said, these are the steps that can be taken. You know, we write to inform you, you know, this happened. However, here's what can transpire, here's what takes place. Is it something as simple as all the red tape? Do we have a $100 gift card to Farm and Fleet and says, here is your reimbursement to fix your mailbox? We're not going to go back and forth and create checks and the staff time. We've made contact, here's a gift card to go replace your mailbox, and it's done and over with at that point in time.
Yeah, can I ask a clarifying question? We still do the pre-inspections?
We do, we have done those the past several years, where we do pre-inspections. As President Bradley had alluded to earlier, Foxmore Fairfield was a major culprit, where we had a lot of the posts that were failing and rotted. So we started a pre-inspection, which we feel is kind of a nice service to the resident in order to help them identify a failing post or an issue. You know, keep in mind too, when we talk about the snowplow striking, physically striking a mailbox, that would typically mean that the mailbox is hanging over the face of the curb, which is not in compliance with the Postmaster's regulations. So when we talk about, anytime a plow strikes a mailbox, there could be an instance where the plow rode over the curb. So again, there's a lot of variables to take into place here, but most likely if it strikes, physically strikes the mailbox, that mailbox is no longer in compliance and needs to be evaluated and adjusted properly. So, Public Works staff goes through their route. It's a good way for our drivers to evaluate their route, pre-winter conditions. So if we have, we check a lot of different things, such as the right-of-way trees to make sure branches aren't gonna damage the trucks. So if we need to identify block trimming areas, we can do that. We also identify any raised manholes, so we can go out and address those so they don't damage our snowplow trucks, or any other types of irregularities, excuse me, that occur, so we do that ahead of time. So yes, we still do the mailbox evaluations yearly.
I got my letter, I replaced mine. So, I think that's a great function to help eliminate some of these problems. I think we opened Pandora's Box. My subdivision, I'm required to have a Cedar mailbox. Well, I can assure you, the $75 doesn't probably cover that with the post and everything. And you allude to a $10 board. Well, not if the mailbox broke, because now we have to go get a mailbox, and now what happens when the village buys a mailbox, and it's not the one the homeowner wanted? Now we gotta go back again. Again, I think that...
Yeah, you just replace it with a like or a similar mailbox.
I agree that, you know, I installed a mailbox for my neighbor, and the street sweeper guy that we hired, literally 48 hours after I installed it, ripped it off, destroyed it. I mean, disintegrated it. And the $60, I think it was, that the village had at the time to pay for it, wasn't gonna cover it, you know? So I had to go out and buy a new mailbox and reinstall it and everything, and it was rather inconvenient. But I also think that, I see the Pandora's Box you opened. You know, again, a like mailbox, in whose opinion? Teresa doesn't like the one that Dan went to Menards and picked out for, because he thought it was like the one she wanted. It's not the one she wanted, she wanted this one from Home Depot. It causes, you know, it's pretty subjective. So I think you continue to write them a check, and if they need assistance, then they can ask for assistance and, you know, I'll go help them install it. As Trustee Baumann, got me on speed dial.
And especially, I guess, a couple of things maybe we can do here. One is if the dollar amount needs to be changed, you know, we should, we should just be looking at that, if it needs to be updated, that, you know. Because there's a difference between the box and the post. Mine snapped off of the ground, like you were saying. If, and then the, I guess the silver lining in this conversation could be, is there an improvement to our process that needs to be made internally? Or just notifying the public? And pardon me if this already went in the newsletter in November of last year, just like, hey, go check your mailbox, here's the policy, call us on this number, or email this thing, and this is, this is how we're gonna knock this out? Because it is a super inconvenience for the residents. But unfortunately, it has to be that way. Mailboxes will be damaged by plowing, and I think residents totally accept that. Unless, and until they're the one that has their mailbox break, but it's not much we can do about it. Teresa?
Not that I want to continue this whole conversation, but we had such a long conversation about this the last time we discussed it. And I don't remember how long ago it was, if you were on the board or not. We spent a lot of time talking about this, and what it came down to is, we do not have any type of uniformity with the mailboxes when you just go through the different subdivisions throughout Montgomery. And because of that, we have that problem where maybe something is a weaker material, and there may be more getting knocked over in a particular subdivision that particular winter, or whatever the case may be. And I don't mean to be so flip about it, but it was really an exhausting conversation because we spent a lot of time talking about mailboxes. And we settled on the amount of 75, and that's where we landed because we just went through, not just, but we had gone through so many different scenarios and different ideas. And I understand you're questioning more that process. But we went with that process because of that reason, because there are so many different types of mailboxes throughout the village. Instead of, let's send somebody out to do a repair or to replace it with what we would have in stock in the Public Works. Because now it doesn't match with all the neighbors, and now that's the oddball house. That's how we came to that conclusion of we are going to, if the resident is eligible, we would give them the $75 check for them, you know, for the inconvenience of us damaging their mailbox. I'm done.
I agree with the dollar amount though, because again, with inflation and everything, because that was, that was a number of years ago. That was probably four or five years ago. And we came up with that dollar amount. And, you know, let's face it, everything has changed as we've experienced. So maybe it is time to revisit that, the dollar amount. Maybe we haven't kept pace with the times. I haven't gone out shopping for mailboxes, but maybe it's $75 doesn't quite cover it. And I think we don't just write them a check for $75, do we? Do you have to turn in a receipt? Yeah, you have to turn in a receipt, so...
So then maybe, and again, I agree with you that perhaps we need to revisit the amount, but based on what we have discussed so far this evening, maybe there is a way to streamline the whole process where it takes less of, less of an effort from the resident, you know, particularly in the cases where it is our fault and we've damaged it. It's not something that, a case where there was a mailbox that was falling apart and fell over. So I hear, I hear what you're saying. I could understand, you know, maybe we do need to streamline that process and revisit the amount.
For next year?
Yes.
For next year, for next season.
Did I summarize?
Yeah, you did. And I appreciate you trying to, and all board members trying to find ways to streamline what we do, also provide better service to the residents. And then we could just take a break, and then we'll keep talking about this in a little bit.
I kind of like Trustee Baumann's idea about handing my gift card. I mean, if we've completely destroyed a mailbox, but again, if you go out and if you gotta set a temporary mailbox, oh my God, the thing just fell off, I could put two screws in it and be on my way. Just put two screws in it, be on your way. Don't make someone go through the process to, you know, issue a check or, you know, or give them some relief on it. It's just, yeah, I just think we're spending a lot of time on the process when we can simplify it.
Yeah, and I don't really want us to get into the business of editing their mailbox in any way, providing any sort of tweaks or this and that.
I guess, again, just one more question. Jennifer, you're new to the role, your department though, is this taking up a lot of time of your department's staff? I mean, is this really, is this worth all this conversation? Is it that big of a deal for your staff at Village Hall?
The entry part of the invoice itself is very minimal time from that standpoint. We do enter these vendors in as alternate vendors. We don't see them come in often. So I would say it's minimal time spent from the finance side for cutting that check.
So have we spent more time talking about it tonight than it is actually doing the job?
From the finance standpoint, I mean, we cut checks weekly sometimes, and obviously we'll cut checks tomorrow, it'll be included in that, whether we cut one last check or not. We won't necessarily see that reflected.
Yeah. We've had a light year, I mean, I don't want anybody to spend a lot of time, but Jesus, seems like that one season, we probably had 100 damaged mailboxes. Well, and this brought up another thought, then going forward on future developments, I don't know if we can do this or not, but should we, when the developer comes in, we should tell them, no plastic mailboxes, they gotta be metal, they gotta be this. Should we be dictating?
So the post office now, actually, and somebody else can jump in, for all of my projects at work require cluster mailboxes. So where you put like 10 or 12 together, you know, like the big box. So the issue seems to be sort of phasing itself out, I would think.
Even for single-family developments?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah, because it's, you know, cumbersome to go to the door, then it's cumbersome for them to go to your driveway, and now they're just trying to find ways to streamline their process.
I just get junk mail in mine, everything I get online, so...
Yep. Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, future meetings. We have a very important Plan Commission meeting this Thursday, March 2nd. The next Village Board meeting is Monday, March 13th at 7:00 PM. And we are canceling the committee of the whole meeting for March 21st. Are we canceling that already? Or are we gonna wait and see if we need it?
We're gonna wait and see if we need that until 13th. So that is not canceled yet. All right, with that, I'd entertain a motion to go, actually to adjourn into executive session to discuss the acquisition of real property pursuant to 5 LCS 120 over 2C5.
So move.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Mersek?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
And we're adjourned, thank you.